Yeah, they need to, they need to close their Google meetings windows and then. Or the calendar, the calendar has the zoom. Close this, close the Google meeting window and then go back in and click on the zoom.
We've got, we've got just a couple of people that are trying to come in remotely, so we're going to hold off starting the meeting for just a minute or two.
And then go back.
Thank you very much.
Close the window that you're. Being held by Zoom. So just close it, pretend like we're all done and just close it. Then go back to the email or to the calendar. Google became very clever and because of COVID and all the usage of video products, they added Zoom or Google meeting links to every appointment.
Are we ready? And he's here, so Dan can take. So I can call the meeting in order. All right, we'll call the meeting into order. We will start with the pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have the clerk call, take the role. Chairman Bartlett. Here.
Supervisor Headlet.
Here.
Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Maves.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Rogers.
Here.
Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Calabrese.
Excused.
Supervisor Keeter.
Here.
Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor McCullough.
Here.
Supervisor Story. Supervisor Vandermeil. Supervisor Neha.
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Tripp. Supervisor Proctop.
Here.
Supervisor Jensen.
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer.
Here.
Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartson.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Approval of minutes, Supervisor Steen moves, Supervisor McCullough seconds, any discussion in the minutes? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carry. Presentation of petitions, memorials and other communications. We have recognition of retiring county employees, Barb Vannis, 25 years clerk of courts, and Lynette Anderson, 25 years in the county jail. What a wealth of experience there in two people. Anyway, Barb is on the, on the Zoom call or Zoom meeting with us, I understand. Barb, would you like?
Yes, I am.
Would you like?
Yes, I am.
A couple of words?
Um, yes, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the county for the experience that I've had. I had a lot of really good experience. I participated in union negotiations and, and the other labor management work group after the union was disbanded. I participated in that as well to keep communications open and really appreciated my time and the experiences that I've had with the county. So it was very good.
All right, thank you, and we really appreciate your service to Dunn County. It was, it was great.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, clerk? All right. Public comments. All right, thank you. Appointments, y'all probably have an appointment sheet, one that was probably updated just recently this week. For the Fair Board, reappoint Deborah Gottliebson, reappoint Derek Wolf, and appoint to succeed Justin Jensen, Larry Bjork, and as the FSA representative on the Land Conservation Committee. Point to fill on expired term of John Creaser, Jim Thompson. And on the zoning board of adjustment, the term expires or would have expired this month, reappoint Mark Peach. I need a motion for this, Supervisor Steen moves, Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, opposed? Motion carry. For the ad hoc redistricting committee, this kind of was last minute. I had to try to do it over the weekend, which I appreciate people saying yes and getting back to me. But I appoint myself the board chair, David Bartlett, Andrew Mercer, Paul Miller, Brian Johnson, Lon Handlin, Michael Rogers, Anne Vogel and Robert Bauer. Thank you. So moving on to the report of the county manager.
Thank you, Andy. Wanted to start with our efforts to find a replacement for our zoning administrator, county planner. Probably heard Mark Olson.
Oh, can you speak into your mic more, please?
Last day with us was June 45. We have initiated a search to replace him, but we did explore alternatives, including whether or not we should contract zoning administration to an outside agency. We also explored with a couple of adjoining counties, the possibility of sharing some staff, which would be dependent on their workload, but potentially representative of savings. But when we examined those options and discussed it with our planning systems committee, the decision was made that we should seek a replacement on staff for the zoning administrator, county planner. That had been open for a couple of weeks. I do tomorrow is the first deadline. I know we already have some five or so.
Applicants, oh, suddenly I'm.
Yep.
Wow. Um, we already have five or so applicants, so we're hoping we have some good ones out of that, and I will keep the county apprised as we go forward with that process. The second item on my report is the fiscal year 2022 budget and levy status report. And for this portion, I'm going to turn over the podium to our chief financial officer, Keith Stray.
Anything else?
Department Division heads the customary and usual summaries that we provide at this point in, in time of the budget, and this is really your initial, general sense of where the initial request came in. It's by no means a final project, process or project at this point. It's early in stage. In that, I'm going to share my screen here and just hit the high points of it to start the conversation. Okay, the first page that, that you would have received is the summary of the overall requests. And this is a format that the county has used for years and supervisors have received this already, and this will be posted on the county's website. I will be providing a link once all the budget information is out there so that everybody has ready access to it. In short, the total asks for expenses came in at $90.5 million, which is in comparison to 83.3 million. Now, there are a large amount of capital project requests, and you could see highlighted in here. For example, the public works highway budget is up approximately $4 million in budget requests, and there's a large amount of that for capital projects. Per the capital improvement plan that you adopted earlier this year, as well as some additional money. I'm not going to go through all these individual. I will point out, as in historic or in past years, we've got the neighbors of Dunn County budget, which has a slight increase, but I will point out that recently the NDC committee did ask that we add positions for PM homemakers, and these numbers do not reflect that. So that will have to come as part of round two as we go through this, and staff will be preparing that information for consideration. I'll point out, it still indicates, at least on the initial blush, a $308,000 deficit, which again, this is within the range that we've seen historically. Outside of that, I do want to point out the bigger picture, bottom line numbers, really at this point, whoops, I'm sorry, went too far, is down here at the bottom on that first page. And one of the biggest things that we have to make sure we comply with is the levy limit. And at this point, we're over that limit as estimated right now. The state of Wisconsin does not give us the information until the middle of August. So this is just using last, last year's number and using that as a starting point, and we're approximately $2.7 million over. That's a pretty significant amount of adjustments that need to be made to get within that. Now, there's multiple options that you can borrow for more things if they're not operating, or there's other adjustments, if you can find new revenue sources, you know, whatever the, the case may be. Unfortunately, in our local units of government, our options for revenues are very, very limited under the state constitution. Over here, I added a new box this year because now we have a five-year capital plan, and you'll be doing that, I'm assuming, going forward. And in that plan that you adopted earlier this year, you put a debt goal of $3 million annually, and 2022 is the first year. The requested bonding or debt was 5.2 million. So again, you've got a excess of requests of 2.2 million or just short of 2.3. So I'll totally add that up. We're just short of $5 million in total adjustments that will have to be made during this process to comply with levy limits or meet your bond angles. That's one that you do have discretion with, so within statutory limits, which we're well under. The next page I want to highlight is we provide you with a summary of the position requests, position adjustments that impact finances, and I won't read through this list, but this is information provided to you, and certainly we will have that discussion during the standing committee meetings, as well as the county board workshop and meetings beyond that. I guess bottom line is new levy requests built into that summary information come to 423,000 as estimated at this point. There will be adjustments to these costs. The Wisconsin retirement system recently had sent out updated numbers for next year. It's actually a half percent increase, or I'm sorry, decrease. So that means in rough numbers, we'll be able to reduce our total budget by 60,000 bucks. That's not all tax levy, but there is a savings there with that change. Health insurance is out for bid, dental insurance is out for bid. Those bids haven't been awarded and finalized yet. We're hoping to realize some savings. We started with a 10% increase in health insurance. We're certainly hoping to come in under that. So this just gives you a rundown of the positions that were requested or suggested for change. The last summary that it provided is, you may recognize this, if you look back to the CIP documents when we presented that, and what I did was I added another block off to the right in a different color, which are the budget requests. I took what was adopted in the CIP and I added there and I identified what was requested in any variances. So for example, let me run down here to the bottom. Essentially, the requests increased by $2.3 million. A vast majority of that is in the public works area for highway and road projects. So that can be discussed certainly more at the standing committee level, as well as the budget workshop on, workshop on August 11th. Also, when I roll out the detailed budgets to you, that will include the capital project list prepared by the highway commissioner. So that will all be in the information that will be coming out. But yeah, here is, here is the project I'm talking about, essentially $3 million of additional funding for highway projects, annual highway projects that were not in the initial CIP. So and with that, I will open it up for any questions.
Any question?
I just wanted to remind everybody, going forward, of course. So this is the first draft. This is, we simply took the information that we had. We've got new information, as Mr. Stray said, that's going to affect the bottom line, pros and cons. One thing that he didn't mention, but I think you're all aware of, we are doing a comp and class study. What's built into these initial figures is a 2% adjustment to our pay grid. The comp and class study will give us information about where we are with regard to likely competitors for employees and how we may need to adjust in order to stay competitive, may enable to attract qualified employees to work for us. That can have a profound effect, bottom line, on the, the budget as we go forward. And you've heard, of course, the stories coming from everywhere about the difficulties of attracting qualified employees. It is across the board, it is in all segments, and Dunn County is no different. Going forward from this, at each of the standing committees in August, supervisors will be asked to review the submitted budgets of the departments they oversee. You're being asked to do your normal diligence, but, or even more so, taking a look at what has been proposed, asking questions of staff and generating ideas for positive changes, whether that means increasing revenue, decreasing costs or shifting emphasis. It is going to be a difficult budget process. A $5 million hole is, is nothing to, to blow off. It's going to take a lot of work, but I think it's going to take a lot of work on the part of all the supervisors. Ultimately, as you know, again, after the standing committees finish their reviews and make their recommendations, it then comes the executive committee, which has to try to pull the whole thing together and produce a balanced budget. So it is a daunting task. We've been in this position before, perhaps not this dire, but it is to be expected with the levy limit laws that restrict our abilities to raise revenues, to provide the services that so many of our residents in Dunn County value. So that's kind of an overview of the process going forward I wanted to share with everybody.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, Keith.
Just wait. Okay.
No. Quick, the, the, the question I had to ask was that, on the first page you showed, on 2022, other revenue sources, I'm assuming that's a state or grants, federal grants, or am I, I need a little more education there?
Other revenue sources are, is more or less the catchall for grants, fees, things like that that come in. Miss, there can be miscellaneous refunds that come in that are budgeted that are expected. So it's, it is kind of a catchall for all of those types of things, matching funds. For example, we do have at least one program where we're in a partnership with a government, and they pay us for part of that, and that's where that would be classified.
So that's primarily where all those funds come from? And any way to improve that?
I, we challenge departments through the budget process. County manager and I, in the three plus years I've been here, when we meet with them in June every year, that's one of the things that we put in the budget instructions we have in our one-on-one meetings, is asking, have you checked your fees lately? Are there abilities to partner with other governments, things like that? So I can't say, there's always room for improvement, but that has been discussed very routinely.
So that's primarily the sources of income that we have to offset our shortfall at this time then? All right, thank you.
Supervisor Neo.
Yeah, I looked through this earlier today. Thank you for sending it out already. I came into a couple of questions and I'll kind of, more than one question, so I'll kind of jump through them by sheet. First one I have is, on the first sheet, you have external organizations. What is external organization? Because it went from 77,950 to 146,300. Not a big jump, but.
Right.
It's something that stuck out to me, so I figured I would, I would ask.
And those are budget requests that, that are received through the CR and T committee, and that is from what it says, external organizations, West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning, Dunn County Housing, and this year, the, the bulk of that increases for Dunn County Economic Development Corporation, the request that they have for funding for next year. So that, it, it's for outside in. Years ago, there was even more participation with outside agencies, Maple Painter, Stepping Stones, things like that. They would have been in here as well, but as budgets have gotten tighter, that's been really scaled back.
Okay, the next one on the same page that kind of jumped out on me was work comp. It went from 841,233 to 1.835 million, almost a million increase between the two.
Sure.
From last year to this year, and I know it is a request, but it just kind of stuck out, stood out to me.
Yep, and I certainly understand, if you look in the third column in from the right, there's a million dollar fund balance applied. What is being requested, and it was discussed with the committee on administration, is transferring a million dollars out of workers' compensation fund into the health fund. There's excess funds in there that accumulate over time. We've had very good luck with workers' comp. So we're a self-funded, unlike a private entity where you pay into the state. We're self-funded, so we have, if we have low claims, then we keep the money. And we've reviewed that, and that's being proposed this part of the budget.
Okay, jump over to the second page now, and it, on the, the second line down, it's got a resignation to the DA office, and it says additional cost, compensation, absence payout. That doesn't make any sense to me, so it was for 25, 25,978. So what is a compensated absence payout?
Sick leave, vacation, accumulated balances. And when an employee under the county's employment policies and handbook, there are certain payouts that take place. So for example, if you retire and you have certain leave banks up to a certain amount or whatever, they are paid out, and they have a budgetary impact, because the responsible department for that employee has to pay that.
Okay. Thank you, that's it for now.
Thank you. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, sir. This isn't really about the budget, but yet it is about the budget. There's been a lot of negativity about the county finances, but now what you sent us today about the bonding, we get a double A rating. Can you kind of, you know, that's a pretty good rating, right?
If I could, if you don't mind Supervisor Bjork, I can cover that when we get to that item on the agenda as far as the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith, I wonder if you could refresh my memory. It seemed to me in March of this last year, we started a $20 per license tag in Dunn County to collect $20. So we collected that for 10 months, right?
Oh, you're talking vehicle registration. Yeah, the vehicle registration, yes.
This year we'll collect it for 12 months.
Correct.
That money was about how much money to anticipate?
Oh, let's see here, I've gone off the top of my head, but it's approximately $700,000.
That's what I thought, okay. So that's part of that, I assume, under highways, is that correct?
Correct, that would be. Yep, that would be under that $6 million of other revenue sources.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to purchase orders.
Yes, you have in your packets the purchase orders, over $40,000.
Well, your mic isn't working again.
That's because I haven't been turning.
I'm sorry.
And actually likes it when I don't make noise. That's right. We have the purchase orders over $40,000. There are three of them. They are all self-explanatory from Transit Public Works and Administration. I'd be happy to try to field any questions you may have.
Any questions? Not moving on.
The last thing that I wanted to point out to everybody is the employee picnic. We had to cancel last year because of COVID, and fingers crossed, we do not experience a significant surge that causes us to have to cancel this year. As of now, we are intending to have an employee picnic on August the 24th, starting at four. You're all invited and encouraged to attend. It is a wonderful opportunity to get to interact with county employees. The food is always very good, and it's a bargain at $7 a ticket. So if you have the ability, also, if you know any county retirees, they are invited as well. We'd love to see them too, so I'll get the word out, and if you're able to make it, we'd love to see you there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Not? Yes. Supervisor.
Manager, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but what percent or amount of county ARPA money will go towards installing fiber for the county?
Installing what?
Installing the fiber for internet.
Oh, okay, you're asking about broadband.
Broadband.
At this, at this point, the county has received half of the ARPA money, $4.4 million. We're earmarked to receive 8.8. We've received the money and parked it in an interest-bearing account with the state. It's a low interest, but it's interest-bearing, and one of the I areas where we can spend the money is on broadband. However, the other area, another area we can spend it is on revenue recapture for revenue lost due to COVID. There's a formula that can be calculated. But what every organization, Wisconsin Counties Association, Wisconsin Towns Association, the professional associations for county finance officers, the state itself is advising, don't rush to spend the money, because right now it's relatively narrow. But we saw the same thing with earlier COVID monies received from the federal government. It starts out narrowly what you could use, and then they open it up. And we do not have to spend this money until December of 2024. So what we are being advised is be judicious. Don't rush to spend the money. Don't spend it on the first project you come across, because as time goes by, our options are likely to increase. So we are taking a cautious wait-and-see approach at this time. As far as how much we might spend on broadband, we might spend zero, we might spend all of it. I mean, that will be up to the county board. Ultimately, this county board will be deciding how that money is spent. It's just prudent at this point not to spend it yet.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not. We will move on to reports of departments and start with the outside auditor. Keith, were you going to come up and do that?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'll just do a real brief introduction and then turn it over to our independent audit firm, represented by. our independent audit firm, uh, represented by April Anderson, who's with us tonight via Zoom. Um, annually, the county is required under statute as well as, uh, grants, grant requirements and so on, to have an independent audit of our financials and the information that we're reporting. And it's not a performance audit. It's an audit to make sure that the information that we're providing on the finances um, are accurate within a reasonable testing. And to make sure that we're in compliance with the requirements for financial reporting for grants and other purposes. So uh, with that, April Anderson from Clifton, Larson and Allen is with us tonight to give you, uh, the annual report on the fiscal year twenty twenty audit. April.
Thank you, Keith. Um, good evening, everyone. And as he stated, I'm here to present the twenty twenty audit report to you. Um, what you should have received is called the executive audit summary. And this is preliminary numbers, but, um, we will be issuing the final report in the next week or so. Um, and so in this executive audit summary, what we try to do is take the key pieces of information for you to know as a governing uh, body and management, um, to, to understand how the, the year ended up for twenty twenty. Uh, the audit report is about eighty-five pages long. So again, we try to, um, pull out the key pieces of information for you to know. Um, so then when we do get into the executive audit summary, the first page or electronically page three of thirteen, uh, you have the audit findings and results. And so on this page, the second paragraph is the audit opinion. And there you'll see that we will be issuing an unmodified opinion. And so that is the highest opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. It's considered a clean opinion. Um, or it means that your financials are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards that you must adhere to. So obviously that's what you're striving for and, um, that is because you, Keith and his team and, and many people across the county, employees across the county that we work with and work with the financial information, um, you know, are properly recording items. As we do go through the audit, um, we don't, we not only issue the audit opinion, but we also issue a report on internal controls. Um, we're required to identify any control deficiencies or weaknesses that we, um, note through the audit procedures. And here you'll see that we are going to be issuing two material weaknesses and one significant deficiency. A significant deficiency is considered a little less severe than a material weakness. Um, these are common findings for entities of your size. We worked with over a hundred and seventy governmental entities in just Northwest Wisconsin. And most of the time we report these three particular findings. Um, and so these are ones that, these are the ones that we've reported in the past for the county and there's nothing new um, that we're reporting this year. So, um, obviously good news that there's no new findings. Um, but and, and it's not that you should be overly concerned about these findings that are being reported, but you need to be aware of them and cognizant of, of them existing. The first finding is annual financial reporting under generally accepted accounting principles. And so what this means is, is I noted about the opinion on the financial statements, that your financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. However, um, the financial statements are technically the responsibility of governance and management. But you look to us to assist in drafting the financial statements for you. Um, because as I said, it's eighty-five pages long. Uh, it takes a lot of time to prepare those and to pull everything together. And so again, common that, um, the governmental entities that we work with rely on us for that, um, service. The second finding is material audit adjustments. And so what this means is that as we do go through the audit procedures, uh, we do, uh, propose certain audit adjustments to the numbers to get them in accordance with some of the accounting standards and, um, certain a- accounting principles. Um, and again, this is very common. So, um, generally your, your team, your finance team, accounting team, they are obviously recording information, um, properly into the system. However, there's certain standards and um, principles of accounting that are kind of quirky that require us to just assist, we assist you with some of those audit adjustments at year end. And then when you get into the significant deficiency, uh, section, you'll see there that we have limited segregation of duties that we report. And what this means is that in the different, um, transactional processes of the county, uh, receiving dispersments, payroll, making journal entries, um, not one person should really have access to the different parts of that process. They shouldn't be able to initiate the transaction, reconcile it, um, or be the one reporting it. However, just due to limited staff availability and size, um, that's just not, uh, very efficient, efficient or effective, cost-effective to hire more people to be able to split some of these duties more than what they are already. Um, so again, I want you to be aware of that. And the key here is that you have mitigating controls to help, uh, reduce the um, the potential of error or fraud occurring. And so, you know, doing, um, reviews, having outside people do reviews of certain things, um, uh, you know, is key in this, in this position. And, um, it's, it's key to continually assess your processes and controls and, and make those changes where you see, um, would be beneficial. Then, um, that's, that's overall findings, internal control findings on the audit. Um, but then we also, as we go through the audit, we're doing the financial audit, but then we're also doing a compliance audit because of the amount of funding that the county receives from the state and federal government. And so the next item, um, is about compliance on those particular aspects that we have to test as we go through. And here you'll see that at this point in time, uh, we don't have any compliance issues to report. Then the last section on this first page, um, that I wanted to go over is just the other items that are identified. And so, uh, this is something that we've kind of carried forward for the last, uh, few years. And, um, it's not to the level of a material weakness in, in internal control or significant deficiency, but just something that we wanted, um, to, to note as, uh, what we had to, um, work with during the audit. And so here you'll see that, um, as we do go through the audit, it is expected that there would be receivable listings and reconciliations done timely. Um, and then it would be provided to us, um, at the start of the audit. However, just with certain transitions and staffing and, um, transitions in, in your, uh, system in the recent years, uh, that hasn't been able to be completed, uh, prior to us starting the audit. And so it's just, um, been some additional time on our end, uh, to get through things. So here you'll see that, um, we would look to hopefully receive those reconciliations and listings, um, as we do go into future audits. And it has been improved upon, uh, the last few years as well. So um, it's just a process in, in motion and that, uh, we know that it is, uh, planned to, to incorporate these reconciliations, um, going forward. So that is it for the high-level audit results that I wanted to share. And so if there aren't any questions or concerns, we'll, um, move into some of the actual numbers and, uh, financial results for the year. Um, so we'll skip down through the next few pages. The next few pages is called the formal required communications um, that we are to communicate to governments. Um, but it is really the information that I somewhat kind of uh, summarized to you on that first page already. So we will go down to page eight or ten of thirteen, where you will see the audit report notations, starting with the general fund, item number one.
Can you stop a minute?
Yes.
Can we share the screen?
Oh, yep.
Alright. I, I, I see some, some people, it just looks like they're trying to find something and can't. So it'd be nice if we could share the screen with everyone. It would make it, make it simpler for them to find it.
Yep, and I'm. Okay, can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so there we are. Okay, so here is the general fund. So this is your main operating fund for the county. And you'll see that we show a four-year comparison. So you can see how some things have trended over the last, uh, few years. And, um, in this particular uh, section, you'll see the assets, the liabilities, and then your fund balance, your net of your assets and your liabilities. And I won't go over every single line, but we'll point out maybe some of the lines that have varied, uh, from last year to the current year. Um, and, and a lot of the timing or a lot of differences or variations between last year or between years on the, your balance sheet is really due to timing of maybe payments at the end of the year or receipts at the end of the year. Um, and so, uh, again, I'll just point out those that are, are more relevant and, um, maybe for certain reasons. The first item in the asset section that I wanted to point out is due from other funds. Right here. And so there you'll see that last year that it was, that balance was twelve million dollars. And this year it did go back down to six million dollars. And, um, what that relates to is somewhat of, uh, cash or loan um, for deficit cash in other funds. And so the general fund, um, in prior years has, um, has had a due from other funds mainly for NDC and the negative cash, uh, position that they had, um, there. Uh, which I will talk more about NDC because that is a big factor as to some of the major changes here this year in twenty twenty. Um, but last year for twenty nineteen, there was also a balance due from, or due from, uh, HHS, Human Services and the Highway Department. So Human Services is a common one to have a, a cash flow loan kind of at the end of the year because of the way their funding works. You have your expenses and you've paid those. Um, but a lot of the funding from the state comes, you know, at least a couple of months after the fact or even, you know, into May and June timeframe, sometimes after year end. And so that is common for HHS to have that type of position. Um, last year though, as I mentioned, your highway fund also had a negative cash position of about two million dollars. And so all of that together made up that twelve million dollars. However, in twenty twenty, that did decrease. Um, and a lot of that is due to a restructuring of the NDC debt. Um, and so in twenty twenty, the debt has, had been carried, um, on the NDC ledger and, and books. Um, but this year it was restructured to really, um, mimic and reflect what is occurring there and the fact that tax levy is paying that, um, those debt requirements each year, um, as of right now. And then NDC will be repaying, um, that debt as it, it is able to and funds become available. So, um, in twenty twenty, the big eight million dollar, um, cash flow loan that was out there previously was kind of written off at this point in time or removed. Um, and so what you see in the six million dollars at the end of twenty twenty is really about a four million dollar cash flow loan for highway operations. And then, uh, one point, um, a couple million dollar, uh, loan for HHS at the end of twenty twenty. Then when we get down to, um, nothing real big about the payables, but what we get down to then after that is fund balance. So this is, is really what, where we, um, focus on because it's, it's your net of your assets and your liabilities and really what's considered available. Um, or your reserve, you might have heard it called. And so here you'll see, um, that there are some major fluctuations in this section um, in twenty twenty from twenty nineteen. And again, this kind of points back to the whole NDC transaction um, that occurred and, or the restructuring of that debt. And so overall, your fund balance actually decreased from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty um, by about five million dollars. And so again, high level, that might be of concern, but that is um, really because of that transaction with NDC and the county taking on that loan versus NDC paying that over. And so, um, when you do look at the pieces and the parts of fund balance, so that is where it can really tell more of the story too. And so, um, your fund balance, even though it did decrease, you'll see that there's three different categories there. There's non-spendable fund balance, um, which you'll see decreased significantly from last year. And so non-spendable fund balance is, is just that. It's, it's assets that you have on your balance sheet, but they aren't really in a spendable form. So last year you had a big due from other funds. You had a big due from NDC. Um, but it wasn't really spendable because it had already been spent by NDC. And, and it wasn't available to be paid back by NDC in the immediate future. So with that, uh, restructuring of the debt, you'll see that your non-spendable portion actually decreased quite a bit. And then your unassigned portion, the highlighted part here, did increase to that ten million. And so, um, so that is actually a positive move for that unassigned balance. And so, um, stepping back a little bit here, the, the one in the middle is assignments. And you'll see that that increased a little bit. And what assignments are, are those kind of carryovers or set-asides that the board has identified, um, certain purposes or use of fund balance. And so you'll see that that increased from last year. And the big increase there is really due to, you have your kind of normal carryovers, but another part of that is, um, when you use fund balance to, um, balance your subsequent budget. And so in twenty twenty-one, you had to, um, you balance, you applied fund balance of one point one million to balance your budget. And so that's why that increased, um, there. But then when we get down to that unassigned fund balance, again, I said that that increased and that was a positive move to that unassigned because that's what is truly considered available then. And what we look at there is that balance to your annual expenditures. And, uh, a benchmark that we kind of go by and GFOA goes by is about twenty-five to thirty-three percent is where you want that unassigned fund balance to be at as a percentage of your annual expenditures. And so this highlighted line there shows what that percentage is. And you'll see that, um, with that increase in your unassigned fund balance, that percentage increased to about forty-nine percent. Um, and we, we generally do see for the counties that we work with in Northwest Wisconsin, um, that even though our recommendation is about twenty-five to thirty-three percent, counties generally do have an unassigned fund balance higher between that thirty-five to forty percent range or for thirty-five to forty-five percent range. So, um, you, you kind of fall within that level of, um, where it's comfortable as far as you have enough funds available for those unknown expenditures that might, um, come about. Um, but that it's not at a too high of a level that, you, you know, you might, um, be thought of as not using the, and managing the funds usefully and effectively. So it, it's at a really comfortable level there. Um, and it, that's a positive move from that thirty-eight to forty-nine percent. And again, is a lot due to that NDC debt restructuring. So then, um, after we get through that main general fund, what we see here is the special revenue funds where you, uh, the county reports, these are considered kind of self-sustaining funds and the county reports specific, um, revenues and sources coming in to pay for specific, um, expenditures and, and programs. So here you'll see the top one is the Human Services Fund. And that is at zero. And that is, uh, county policy that that fund will balance out to zero at the end of the year. Um, and so how that occurs is that if there's a deficit and expenditures exceed revenues, then the general fund transfers funds in to cover that deficit. Um, and so the last couple of years that has been, or, uh, a few years ago, that was the case where, um, transfers out had to be made to cover that deficit. In the last couple of years though, the Human Services Fund In the last couple of years, though, the Human Services Fund has ended up as a positive outcome where revenues have exceeded expenditures. And so there was actually a transfer back into the general fund. And in 2020, it was about $300,000 transfer back in. The other funds here then that are reported as special revenue funds are the Jail Assessment Fund, Solid Waste, and CDBG. And so these generally stay relatively consistent from year to year. You'll see that there was a drop in the jail assessment, but that was kind of a planned drop in use of that available funds for projects occurring there. And then Solid Waste had seen a decline in the last few years. And so this year, a good little turnaround there with the positive or the increase in fund balance. And that was a lot due to some decrease in expenditures for that operation. And then the CDBG revolving loan fund is simply for that in providing those types of loans to constituents in the county. And that can fluctuate year to year depending on what repayments on loans there are and what loans go out. So then when we go to the next page, the next fund that is reported is the Debt Service Fund. And this fund is used purely for that purpose in transferring or levying and taxes to pay for your principal and interest on debt annually. And so generally, this fund would carry a zero balance or a very minimal balance because you would just have available what is needed each year there. You'll see that you do actually carry a balance and it did increase in 2020. And that's just been a result of some debt transactions in the past and now in this current year when you have refunding or refinancing transactions where you might earn a premium. And so obviously, that is beneficial to do those refunding transactions and you were able to increase your fund balance there. So that that funding is available to help pay for future debt purposes. And in 2020, you did make principal payments of about $3.4 million out of the Debt Service Fund and interest and fiscal costs of about 1.3 million. The next fund is a Capital Projects Fund, and this is a fund that will vary quite often from year to year simply due to normally what goes into here is debt issuance for projects and capital equipment expenditures. And so in past years, you did issue debt for that purpose and then it was spent down over the last few years. The next section is the Enterprise Funds, item number five here. And so here, this is for your Highway Department, Transit, and then NDC is our operations that report under this type of fund. And for the Highway Department, we did show a little bit more information here for you, but again, I won't go over every line. I'll just hit on some of the highlights. And here, what I had mentioned earlier, talking about the general fund and that there was a kind of interfund loan or due from the highway. Here you'll see that there's no cash at the end of 19 and 20. And so that is why that you needed that loan or interfund activity to balance that cash in the fund for the year. So when we do get down to the bottom here, this is where you'll see what the overall change was for the activity for the year. And so in 2019 and 2020, you'll see that expenditures exceeded revenues quite significantly in both of those years. And so and again, that's obviously why there's the negative cash or no available cash at the end of the year as well. At the bottom here, a benchmark that we look at for this particular type of reporting fund is called the current ratio. And what this is, is your current liabilities to your current, sorry, your current assets to your current liabilities. So obviously, you want available enough cash in current receivables to be able to pay for your current payables and liabilities. So you would like to see a one-to-one ratio here. And so obviously, in the last couple of years with no available cash at the end of the year, this ratio has been under that one-to-one desired mark. So we'd like to see that increase back up to at least that one-to-one ratio. Then on the next page, the next fund that reports as an enterprise fund is NDC. And here you'll see again, some pretty significant changes and shifts from 2019 to 2020 in certain areas. But mostly, it relates to the whole restructuring of debt and moving that over to off of the NDC books and over to the county at this point in time. So when we get to down here to the liability section is where you'll see the biggest changes right here in that advance from other funds that I had mentioned, no longer exists in 2020. And then the bonds payable that came off the books in 2020 and moved to the governmental activities. And so then ultimately, that resulted in some significant changes here in the net position area. But what we do like to see here overall is that even though overall net position or overall net position did really increase for the year, both due to the NDC or the debt restructuring as well as just from operations, you'll see that there was actually a $28,000 positive or about $29,000 positive result there as far as your revenues exceeding your expenditures. But then what you do see here is that big transfer in to cover the debt. And then there was cash available, available funds at the end of the year. So 4.4 million was then repaid to the county for some of that outstanding debt that has been covered since 2012 when it was issued. So then just ultimately going back up here, you'll see that the unrestricted net position, generally, you would like to see that in a positive manner. And you'll see in the last few years, it had been declining and declining. And again, that was due to the debt that the county was carrying or NDC was carrying, but it wasn't able to cover those debt requirements annually. And so with that restructuring, you'll see that that really turns this amount around and is a positive increase now in that unrestricted fund balance. And the net investment, that amount changed significantly too because what that is, is the capital assets or what you spent your debt proceeds on, but now you're not netting that with the outstanding debt that's out there. Then for the last activity that you report as an enterprise fund is the Transit Commission. And here we'll just kind of move down to this bottom section where it's ultimately the results for the year as far as the change in that position was positive, 119,000. And you know, that was a result of both some decrease in costs and then some additional funding being available with COVID to cover some of those costs as well. So it, so you had saw deficits for a couple of years in a row, but now that's turned around a little bit to positive results there. Then you have a couple more funds that you report, and those are called Internal Service Funds. And those are really for the purpose of kind of providing goods and services within the county. And so I did note, if you noted earlier in the budget review, Keith had mentioned the Workers' Comp Insurance and the Health Insurance Fund. And so here you'll see that the Workers' Comp total balance or net position is at the 2.5 million. In the last couple of years, you've had positive kind of claim years where your claims have been low compared to what you've put into that fund. And then on the opposite side of things here for the Health Insurance Fund, you'll see that that has decreased quite significantly the last couple of years in the balance that's in there. And so in last year, you had a pretty big negative claims year where claims significantly exceeded the activity going into that fund. And so what Keith had alluded to is moving some funds between these two to better align and allocate the resources available. Then the last item we like to kind of pull together here for you to know about and keep in mind is the long-term obligations that are outstanding by the county. And so we have talked a little bit about debt, especially with the restructuring debt of NDC. But here, your outstanding general obligation debt went down because even though you did do a refunding, so you issued some new debt, you made your principal and interest payments on your old debt, so that decreased. And what we look at there is that there's a statutory debt limit for every county, municipality, school district, and the state. And so it's 5% of your equalized value. So the county's overall debt limit is really $180 million. And the 35 million of that is about 19.9%. And so the counties that we work with in Northwest Wisconsin, generally, they utilize about between 0 to 20% of their debt limit. And so you fall kind of right within that range. And obviously, you have some capacity there to increase that, but you're at a really good level right now at that 19%. The other things, a couple of things in this section, which was also, I know, mentioned in the budget conversation, is the estimated amount of vested compensated absences. So again, this is what your employees have earned at this point in time for sick vacation comp PTO-type benefits that can be taken in the future. And so the estimated balances for those right here are 3.4 million and 1.6 million at the end of 2020. And you'll see that that went up quite a bit for the governmental activities. And so that includes your general fund, Human Services, all your non-enterprise funds. And so, and that was really a lot of less vacation-type time being taken in 2020. And so more of that accumulated at the end of the year in 2020. And then on the business-type side of activities, so Highway, NDC, and Transit, you did actually see a little bit of a decrease in that estimated liability just due to some transitions of staff and people retiring and that type of thing where their balances were paid out or then removed because they no longer exist at the end of the year. So but that takes us to the end of this summary. And so overall, as I said, with the general fund, positive results there in your main operations of the county. And a lot of that was with that debt restructuring for NDC and just aligning things better there and reflecting really what has been occurring. And then your unassigned fund balance is at a good level there. And the other funds, obviously, Highway is kind of the one to keep the eye on as far as being able to really make sure that able to turn that around as far as expenses and revenues really lining up a little bit better and expenses not exceeding revenues to the extent that they have in the last couple of years. And then when we get to this point, again, the outstanding long-term debt that you have is, you know, reasonable considering, you know, what your capacity is and you're able to take on. So again, this is the normal presentation that I've gone over. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the supervisors? Oh, you did a good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. Have a good rest of the evening.
Great. Moving on. Reports of the departments, we have Human Services. We have Christine, our player here, Director. Would you like to add something to your report, Christine?
Good evening. I just wanted to just take a moment to say that obviously, 2020 was an unusual year. However, when we completed our annual report, which we had the opportunity to do a little bit later in the year because it's not due until now, later into the following year, it was interesting to note that really in terms of activity, we did a vast majority of the same work that we did prior to COVID during COVID. It just looked very, very different. And probably those major areas were when we look at doing our emergency operations or continuity of operations plans and you look at what would be a possible emergency, we've always planned for a tornado, a fire, you know, something like something structural that would happen to the building or the area, a flood that would allow us to, would not allow us to be able to access our building. We did not by any means ever anticipate that we would go through months and months and months of not being able to effectively access the people that we work with. And so probably the major areas operations impacted were our home-delivered meals program. Congregate meal sites closed fairly early on and our home-delivered meals numbers doubled as people were unable to go to a meal site in order to receive the senior nutrition. And the other area that was significantly impacted were in our behavioral health services where people had to quickly adjust to being able to deliver all forms of behavioral health via virtual. Just as you have gone to your doctor or other providers virtually, we have had to learn how to do that same work. So it was an unusual year. I don't think that we're back to normal yet. We are slowly moving in some direction of what will be our new normal, but I think we're still starting out what that's going to look like. So I'm incredibly proud of the people that I work with and the people that we work for who've weathered this year and quickly redeployed and figured out how to do their work differently. But it was, it's an adventure. Any questions?
Any questions? Supervisor Headland, hold on a minute.
All right.
All right. Yeah, Chris, on page three, section is called Benefit Recovery. And I see that there is actually over $2.8 million of fraudulent claims. Now, is that money actually recovered?
So that's the value of what's been determined to be owed and recouped. And it could be fraudulent activity or it could be error. So it could be human error on the part of a person receiving public benefits like food share or badger care. Or it could be error on the part of an agency, you know, the Great Risk Consortium or the determiner of eligibility, or it could be fraud. And so that money actually is what's determined to be, well, that money is the money that was actually collected back. But there's another calculation about money that would actually be owed. Any other questions?
Any other questions of the supervisors?
Thank you.
Not thank you. Moving on from the Environmental Services, we have Chase, Tom, and Morgan here. Do you guys, any of you have something to add? Would you like to come up or you just want to take questions? Are there any questions from the reports that you received? I don't see any. This is a good report. Thank you. So moving on to 10 then. Consideration of Resolutions, Reports, and Ordinances from the Standing Committees, from the Executive Committee. A resolution approving FY 2021 budget adjustments for the Human Services, Public Health, and Sheriff's Department. I need a motion for this. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor McCullough seconds. And speaking to this, it looks like it's Mr. Stratt.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. This budget adjustment is a combination of
This budget adjustment is a combination of requests, or I'm sorry, funds awarded to multiple departments for additional funds received for grants or donations. And they've been presented to their standing committees as well as the executive committee. It's before you tonight for your approval. If approved, it would increase the budget by two hundred, or I'm sorry, five hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy six dollars and establish the budgetary authority for them to use these outside funds that have been received.
Any questions? If not, this requires a roll call vote. We'll have the clerk take the roll.
Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Jensen.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Linao. Supervisor Maves. Supervisor McCullough. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Nihaf. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Story.
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Bauer. Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. Resolution passes. Moving on to ten A two. A resolution awarding the sale of six million, five hundred and fifty five thousand general obligation promissory notes, series two thousand and twenty one A. Providing the forms of the notes and levying a tax in connection for the therewith. This is an updated resolution that you probably just received just slightly. So you might have the old figures in your in your packet, definitely.
Thank you. Do you need a motion on this first?
I do. Supervisor Anderson moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, County Board. Typical for a the day of sale of a debt issue. In the fine details, in the presentation of the authorizing resolution, you can't have changes like this happen because when you go to market with bonds, you pass an authorizing resolution that gives you a range, a maximum and a floor on what you can issue. Typically, the bigger concern is the maximum amount. But that is because in the market, you can have investors that have different motivations and different approaches on how they're submitting their proposals. And today was a an example of that. The winning bidder, and we had really strong bids today. We had eight interested parties and they all submitted bids. And in the heels of a good relatively good audit report as far as the general fund and the fund balance, which is a key metric that's monitored, as well as a credit rating that actually had a slight improvement from a negative outlook to a stable outlook based on budget process changes and so on in recent years. It resulted in a very good bid. And actually, the investor paid a premium to increase the size for their purposes. This is not unheard of. This does happen in the industry. It's just not every time. It all depends on market conditions, demand. There is a lot of demand because there's for municipal bonds in general across the country because there's limited supply. So our timing to market today was really good and it played out in our favor. And again, just as a recap, this is to fund the one point three million in projects, new projects, new money for this year for twenty one budget. But then also to refinance two outstanding debt issues of five million dollars for debt issued in two thousand and thirteen and a bank load with approximately from two thousand and eighteen with approximately four hundred and fifteen thousand left. The bottom line is we will realize savings in the range of four hundred thousand dollars between now and over the next five or so years. And also reduce the budgetary impact in two thousand and twenty two for principal and interest of reducing that by eighty thousand. So the interest rate came in at point five four. That is the lowest I've seen in my twenty plus year career in government finance. It is a shorter term note. It's not a full ten year, twenty year. But that that's phenomenal. So good for the county. That helps us out because the original projected savings were a little over two hundred thousand. We're going to close to double that because we're conservative on our estimates. So at the end of the day, really, we're fortunate, had a lot of things work in our favor. So it's nice to deliver some good news on the finance front, and this is one of them. So this resolution that was sent out just a little bit ago came from our bond council, and this is bringing together all the bid information, putting it in the final legal form that if you approve this tonight, then all the documents are signed, they can be issued, and it's a done deal. So that's why this is before you with those finalized documentations with any final edits to that. So with that, I certainly recommend that County Board approve this.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. O's. Motion carry.
Thank you.
Moving on to ten A three, a resolution approving FY two thousand and twenty one budget adjustment for the neighbors of Dunn County. I need a motion. Supervisor Johnson moves. Supervisor Cumbery seconds. Speaking to this, Mr. Miller?
Certainly. This budget adjustment is to allow us to hire homemakers for the evening shift, for the PM shift. We currently at the neighbors have homemakers in the AM shift. They assist with delivery of meals and various other housekeeping chores, which makes allows the CNAs in the AM shift to focus on patient care. We don't have homemakers for the PM shift, not for a few years, which means that those same duties fall on the CNAs, which simply increases their workload. And we also hear reports of less satisfaction perhaps from the residents or at least sympathy from the residents about the amount of work that the evening CNAs face because they don't have evening homemakers to assist them. We have quite a bit of turnover also at the CNA level in the evening shift. So the idea is this ninety thousand, five hundred budget adjustment would allow us to hire PM homemakers for the remainder of the year. The hope is that by doing so, we will not only reduce the amount of turnover, we will increase the job satisfaction on the part of the CNAs. We will improve the service for our residents and provide a better service overall in the neighbors. As far as funding this is concerned, the state's new budget did increase the Medicaid reimbursement rate for nursing homes. Our expectation, since that date back dates to July first, is that there will be sufficient additional funds coming to the neighbors from Medicaid reimbursement to cover this cost.
Any questions? Supervisor Rogers. Okay, go ahead.
Will this help get the other building open back up?
We don't have a whole building. We do have a neighborhood closed. That is largely driven by other staffing considerations. We're having deuce of a time with nursing staff. And so at this time, we do not anticipate that the homemakers will have any effect on opening that one household.
Any other questions? Not. This is probably a roll call vote, and we'll have the clerk take the roll.
Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Jensen. Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Linao. Supervisor Maves. Supervisor McCullough. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Nihaf. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Story. Supervisor Tripp. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. All right. Resolution passes. Moving on to ten B from the Planning, Resource, and Development Committee in ordinance creating chapter ten of the County Code of Ordinances Regarding Minor Management. This is the second reading. So we had a motion in the second last month. Are there any questions on that, on this? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
On the reading from the first reading, it was my assumption, and is it true that our county conservationists would have the ability to issue citations to Dunn County farmers?
I, we have our, we have Chase here, will if he would like to come up and address that, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the question, Supervisor Bjork. That is correct. As part of this ordinance, there would be the granting of a citation authority that we would have the ability to use if the need arose for such such activity. Most of the time that, you know, in general, that type of decision is going to be made based on findings of fact and consideration for cooperation with potential violation of the ordinance, likely in consultation with Corporation Council and the other circumstances and standards that are part of this ordinance, so.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bjork.
Which one? Larry. Sorry. Who who issues the citations now? I assume it's the DNR. And how are they not qualified to issue citations and you are?
So currently, there is no citation that is issued. It would be a stepped enforcement process for the Department of Natural Resources. What the, having the ability for citation within a county ordinance provides for a general, a better understanding of where our enforcement authority lies. Currently, right now, DNR is comes in for particular cases that need enforcement. They have a stepped enforcement process that can take months, years. We currently have a few situations in the county that are going on five years. The ability for having citation authority within the ordinance allows for a general, a better understanding and expectation for the public as well as for our staff as to how we can see results in the end for some of the violations that are not only violations of this ordinance, but also violations of state administrative code.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
I plan on voting no on this ordinance for several reasons, and I wrote out a couple here. And like Larry said, the biggest difference between the new and the old one is that it gives several people in the environmental service the power of citation. The new ordinance is basically word for word, as is the state standard for minor storage, and is a duplication of state law because we cannot be any standard in the state standard. So it's almost word for word. And I find it ironic that we complain about unfunded state mandates and here taking over the prosecution of violations that the state is already doing. I have heard on numerous occasions that Corporation Council was understaffed, yet this citation authority would give him more work to oversee. They say we need this because the state is slow in enforcement. I, for one, have not seen a DNR, Dadcap, or Justice Department of Wisconsin slow responding to serious violations. I asked a previous county conservations, how many times a year the citation authority would be needed? And he said maybe once a year. So why does Dunn County want to appear so heavy handed on its citizens when there is so little demand for it? Because basically, if they have the citation authority, and they come out to my farm, they better have a court order unless they just want more to visit, and they're more than welcome to. But otherwise, you know, I mean, two can play this game if they want to be, in my opinion, heavy handed. Thank you for letting me start off.
Any other discussion? Anybody? Supervisor Bjork or Larry Bjork?
I would request a roll call vote on this. I think this changes the county conservationist from a position of helping farmers maintain environment, improving the practices of their farm for their self and their neighbors and the county. And puts us just way down the road of this you can do in Dunn County, this you can't do in Dunn County, and then a different set of rules just across the county line to someplace else. So I think farmers need to know through a roll call vote, who is supporting them and who is not.
Supervisor Quinn.
Sure. Just a short response, I think really, the the land conservation department operates almost entirely, virtually entirely, in a spirit of cooperation with farmers. And they really have the farmers, if if we are going to enforce a, if we're going to require a practice, for example, of a farmer, then we have to be in a position to provide them with a cost sharing to to establish that practice. Otherwise, we don't have standing on that. I think Chase's argument that the, in the very few cases where we need to use where enforcement can make some sense. The DNR just has proven to be very slow in acting, and it's not very clear to the farmers in the county exactly what the rules are. And so this, this really does sort of, I think, establish the rules of the road in a very clear way. It's, it's, it's coming from a department that has a long history of working in collaboration and cooperation with farmers. So I think it's really misstating it to say that in any way this is heavy handed or in any way designed to pit the department against farmers. It's just not fair to our staff and not fair to the programs that we're trying to implement.
Any other speaking questions? Supervisor Rogers.
Can you elaborate on the, what they said about the state already has these rules in place and statutes in place and and why the county is going to put these rules as a county ordinance? And help me understand why we're going to do that and what advantages it is and disadvantages it may be.
Sure. So based on, thank you for the question, Supervisor Rogers. The the current situation that we operate under and many counties operate under is we operate under a set of authorities that are granted to the county to administer administrative code through statute, through the Land Conservation Committee. Administrative code NR one fifty one, which is a performance standards and prohibitions runoff standard. That is basically incorporated into this ordinance. And the reason for that is to provide more clarity and more direction for our department is the implementation of it. We currently are not more restrictive than that of the state in these codes. But what happens when we get to the situations where, for example, if there is a non compliance situation, say a nutrient management plan is not being followed on a farm. We have the obligation, depending on the existence of that farm prior to two thousand and two or those fields, we need to offer cost share to comply with that. This ordinance is consistent with that. We're required to offer cost share in order to achieve compliance with a performance standard. In the event that an individual chooses not to accept an offer of cost share, then there's the potential for stepped enforcement. And currently, the way that operates within the state of Wisconsin through DNR is that they they operate on a stepped enforcement process, meaning there's basically an attempt to work with that landowner in order to achieve compliance. If the landowner does not want to cooperate, then there's a process of increasing that enforcement pressure. What happens is the expectation for the landowner, for the general public, for the general public, and for our department is that these processes can take many years to resolve themselves. And it really can be burdensome on not only the landlord themselves who are subject to those rules, but also burdensome on, on the department for amount of workload and time that goes into trying to achieve compliance. By adopting this code, this, this, these portions into ordinance and setting some expectations, it helps give us a better timeline for us, as well as the landlord that may be subject to them, and for the general public that we will have resolved for some of these situations. I mentioned as an example, we have a particular situation that is going on over five years for enforcement for, to resolve a problem that is a direct discharge of processed wastewater and manure to surface water. You know, having some expectation within a county code like this will help provide, I believe, some clarity and a process moving forward. By no means is, is it our intention, as has been stated, to go out and exercise our, our citation authority just out of whim. We have a process that we need to follow. We have cost share that's required to be offered. And in those rare instances where we need to go beyond that, we have that ability now within a county code, if this is adopted, to pursue those types of activities and implementation without leaving it open-ended. And I think there's a, there's a feeling out there as well as if we, if we come out and say, try to work with a producer or a landowner to achieve compliance with the performance standard, and we have no really backbone or teeth to support any of that, then there's really no obligation or incentive for anyone to want to follow any of the rules at all. So I think this helps provide some clarity for us on a general implementation level within, within Dunn County.
Any other questions? Supervisor Johns. Just hold on. All right.
Thank you. Hi, Chase. Can you tell me, are all landowners required to have a nutrient management plan in the state of Wisconsin by the state?
Currently, through NR 151 and a performance standard prohibitions, all, yup, all nutrients that are applied to cropland or pastureland within the state of Wisconsin are required to follow a nutrient management plan that's consistent with a standard. Now, depending on what programs are in or what circumstances, cost share may be required to be offered prior to that enforcement. But that is a, that is the standard in, in the state right now.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Supervisor Rogers.
On what he said. So a farm that's, say, 20 acres, does that individual have to have a plan that's being followed as well? Or how does that?
If they're applying nutrients to cropland, to the, to those fields, then yes, they do need to follow a plan according to the, the current code. Is that, is that the case? If you look at the annual report I provided, you know, we're at about 25% coverage of nutrient management plans in Dunn County right now. So we have a long ways to go to ensure that a plan is being followed. Now, that's not to say that there aren't plans out there that people are following. That number in that, in that annual report reflected what is turned into our offices through farmland preservation participants, manure storage permit holders, a number of other things that have been cost shared with landowners. But in general, yes, any nutrients that are applied should be following a plan.
Supervisor Johns.
One more quick question. If a producer does not have a plan in place, does he have to follow the rule right now? Is he required to follow the plans or nutrient management plans?
Right. So the, the way, the way the rule reads is that if you're applying nutrients to cropland, it must be in accordance with, with an approved nutrient management plan. So if they're not following a plan or they don't have a plan, you know, we're not out on every farm every year. You know, then if we do work with that individual, typically, there's going to be that offer of cost that has to be made for enforcement can, could take place. And, you know, cost share funds are limited, so that just strings out the process, too.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kneer.
His mic is not on?
That's cause.
Is it on now?
Yes.
No, yeah. So Chase, just, just to confirm that this is incorporated in our ordinance, there is nothing different than what the state requires?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's actually more local control rather than relying on the state?
Correct.
And, and that's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Don't see anyone. We've been asked to have a roll call vote, so we'll have the clerk call the roll. Thank you, Chase.
Supervisor Hartung. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Jensen.
No.
Supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Cromry. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Linao. Supervisor Maves. Supervisor McCullough. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Niehoff. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Story.
Yes.
Supervisor Tripp. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Chairman Bartlett.
Yes. Resolution passes. Moving on to 10C, Health and Human Services Boarder. Resolving analyzing contact tracers. I need a motion. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Speaking to the resolutions, Supervisor Morehouse. Just wait. All right.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief. I think it's important for this board to recognize the work of 41 people. Some of them are health department staff. Some of them limited-term employees who came on. Some of them partners from the university. And others who, 41 people who spent, made nearly 5,000 contacts, personal contacts with people in the county, spent over 17,000 hours, all in the effort to keep us safe from COVID-19. And I think it is the least we can do for the board to show our full support and appreciation for the hard work and the success that they've achieved.
Thank you. Any other speaking? If not, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Resolution passes. Moving on to 10B from the Committee on Administration, a resolution denying the claim of Brian Steinoff. I need a motion. Supervisor McCullough moves. Supervisor Headland seconds. Speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Headland.
This is a situation where there was a claim brought against the county, against the Sheriff's Department. The information about this claim was turned over to our insurance company, and they reviewed it. And they have decided that, that our best decision on this would be to deny the claim. It's very important that, in a timely situation, that we do this in a timely manner. And, and I would defer to, or counsel to explain that part of it if you would.
Okay, now. Yes, Mr. Steinhoff is currently incarcerated in the Dunn County jail. He's made a, there's some background information in the resolution. He's made a claim of $2 million against the county alleging that staff from the Sheriff's Department have misused some of his medical information and have inappropriately intercepted his, some communications with his attorney. And as Supervisor haven't noted, our liability insurance carrier is recommending that we need to, that we, that the county board deny the claim so that we can continue with a vigorous defense of it. There are timelines involved and requirements that come into play on the part of the claimant once the claim is denied and formal disallowance is provided to him. That'll be sent out. We'll have a document prepared for Mr. Miller to sign, and that'll be served on him probably yet this week.
Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hold same sign. Resolution passes. All right. Announcements. Next county board meeting is August 10th.
11th.
Oh, 11th. I don't know why I got 10th in my mind, though. Anyway, same time, same place. So we'll hope to see y'all here. Are there any other announcements?
If, if I may just add to that, we do intend that to be an in-person-only meeting. So hopefully, everybody can attend. It's a workshop. And those are always more effective if we can be in the same place as opposed to trying to do it remotely. So hopefully, you can be there.
But you'll probably be sharing information, so it'd be good to have our computers here, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Bring your laptops.
Anything else? County picnic? Throw that out there again. Can we, can we bring our money to the clerk? All right. Sounds good. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.